All right, good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of Ottawa, Illinois. Colonel Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Eichel Kraut.
Here.
Ganyar.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Les.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
We have four present.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the council of the city of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichel Kraut.
Aye.
Ganyar.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is anyone wishing to appear before the council this evening? Helen?
Aye.
You need to come up front, please.
Yep. And will you please say your name and address for the record?
Of course. Helen Jo Reardon, 1214 Paul Street in Ottawa. And I was just wondering, what is the plan, or if there is a plan, for the cleanup of the canal water? I'm sure everyone has seen it. It's a swamp.
It is. We've seen it. We've got a number of issues that we're trying to tackle. We've been trying to get some support from the design engineering firm. We did get some recommendations of some chemicals to put in from DNR. And we've located those at Farm Supply. I believe they're going to try to put that out this week. But unfortunately, I don't know how quickly it's going to happen. Apparently, there's problems all over the state with LJ and the weeds. And we're also looking at trying to acquire a boat. It's got some type of a cutting apparatus on it to go and cut the weeds down. But even with that, we're told it doesn't eliminate the weeds. You know, it's just like mowing your grass.
So that's ongoing?
Yes.
Okay, what about the spraying for mosquitoes?
Um, that's been done.
What, can you tell me when? About?
Uh, probably a month ago. We put mosquito tabs in all the storm inlets every year anyway, so we always have them on.
Will that be done again, or?
If necessary.
Okay. Um, also, you spoke about some chemicals putting in there. How will they circulate through that water where there's no water movement or current?
Um, well, it's my understanding we're going to go and spray it all across the canal, broadcast it. Part of the problem we have with the, um, the reason there's no flow is we're pumping 500 gallons a minute out of the river. And we've had some leaks underneath the bridge where they have the pedestrian path on La Salle Street. And we could barely keep up. There's so much water was leaking underneath the walkway.
Is the pump big enough for all that water?
Well, there's two sump pumps in the hole. And what we did today is we diverted them to pump water that's coming into our sump pit, pump that back in the canal to try to keep more in it so that the water will turn over more often. The 500 gallons a minute was, the original plan was only 200 gallons a minute from a well. So we're doing quite a bit more than what was originally designed, and we can barely keep up. So we're hoping that now that we've diverted the sump pumps from the walkpath and adding that to the canal, that we should be able to get it to where it's got to flow and it'll start. We also talked about taking a couple of weir boards out to lower the level, hoping that it would cause the LJ and everything to suck down towards the east end and go out to storm sewer. But, um, there's no expert on how to handle this. We're doing a lot of guessing, and I wouldn't even say educated guessing.
Have you heard any reports on the quality of the water?
I don't know if we've even tested the quality of the water. I mean, it's getting pumped out of the Fox River, so it's not great.
Yeah. And they're saying the algae in the river is possibly toxic. That could be an issue. Is there any backup plan if this one falls through?
Is there any what?
Backup plan if this one falls through?
Well, I would, uh, after they do the ribbon cutting next week, you know, I mean, it's almost to the point where we know that we have to do some extensive construction to try to figure out why it's leaking underneath. So, I mean, we may get to a point where we just drain it and tear it up, try to find out where the leaks are, and come up with a better plan, but, um...
And put more money into it?
Do what?
Put more money into it?
Well, you know, I'm really impressed by the mural that's on the Central Life Building, and I thought if we drained it down and painted a mural on the bottom.
Absolutely. I'm sure you'd get all the neighbor homes, neighbor residents in agreement with that. And that's another thing, um, with the, looking like it is, I'm sure it's decreased the value on people's properties right now.
Well, I'm a half a block away myself, so, I mean, it's, uh, I certainly am disappointed with where it's at.
I think a lot of people are.
And I don't think that the people who pushed for this are satisfied either. I think everybody knows it's, it's a problem, and...
It's a big problem.
The biggest issue is, is it costs a lot of money to get where we're at, and how much money is it going to take to fix it? And is there even a reasonable way to address the problems and get it fixed?
Okay, um, this is just a question. Would, could there possibly be a report at the next meeting on what's been done? And I don't know if I can request that, or...
I'll have my engineer prepare a report.
Thank you.
And I don't want to throw Tom under the bus. I mean, IMAG was the engineering firm that designed it and took care of the construction. And we've been trying to get them to come and give us some ideas on, you know, first off, you know, what's happening, why is it leaking underneath the bridge on La Salle Street? But then also address these other issues, so...
Okay.
I am hoping that when all the dignitaries are up here next weekend, that somebody's going to say, uh, we need to come up with a better plan.
Yeah.
But we can drain it, and more than likely, we will, to do some construction, and not saying that that's going to make it better.
No, no. Okay, well, hopefully, I can maybe attend the next meeting and see where we're at with that, if that's okay?
Yeah. And you can feel free to call City Hall anytime and ask if there's an update, if you want to...
Oh, okay.
Leave us your email or something. We can copy you on any information, or...
Great, that'd be awesome.
Or we can get it to the Times. I'm sure they'll be asking questions and radio.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Terry Bell, 506 Hudson Street, Ottawa. Retired city worker, current citizen, concerned citizen. The, I had two things now that Helen brought it up about, the first one, obviously, I'll continue with the canal. Does it, it wasn't very transparent in the media, I don't know what happened, but, so it drains there at Guyan Street? There is a drain there for it to go back to the Fox River, right?
Storm sewer, yeah.
Okay, and right now, it's not drained or not draining, or?
No, it's drained, there's a weir. So we kept the boards in, so the canal's going to be three feet high, and whatever's over three feet goes in the storm sewer.
Okay, great.
If we start pulling the boards out, it'll drain more water out.
So there is a level of circulation, supposedly?
Right.
Okay. I agree, it doesn't look good right now. My, my second thing is, uh, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the previous meeting with our local union present, but I see there's another item on Commissioner Ganyar's agenda tonight, the first item being authorizing a management and supervision agreement and wastewater operator contract with an outside firm. Before I retired, it was my understanding there were several employees were given the opportunity and/or did have an operator license in both wastewater and water. So I don't understand, you know, maybe Commissioner can clarify that when it comes up on his part of the agenda. But I, I see it from the out, I mean, from the onset here, it looks like a further erosion of privatizing city services to me.
Terry, this is, this is a renewal of a contract we've had for many, many years.
Okay.
So, and I think the other thing, Terry, you need to check with some of your former workmates, because it's true, we do have some of them that have licenses. The trend is now is that nobody wants to go get the license, because they can get the stipend some other way. And it's, it's a concern that we have, is we don't have people stepping up and taking advantage of the training that's offered and the additional pay to be the operator.
Okay. It's been a few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
My name's Dan Alex, 810 Heritage Lane. I don't know if this is really a question, but I'll, can I state something before the question?
Sure.
Uh, the Ottawa and Corkton event, uh, every year for five, six years, I invited, I have invited my college friends back. This year, we had 12 college friends with their spouses, there's about 22 of us. Several will not be back because of what, how the event was run this year. The thing that bothered me more than anybody, and I don't know who went to it and who didn't in this room, but, uh, it was advertised, I think the number one thing that bothered me more than anything, it advertised that the shish kebab was going to be at Washington Park. Or it never, if it, if it wasn't going to be at Washington Park, it was never, it never came out that way until like the day before. So what, what came down was, you had wine and a barbecue food truck at Washington Park, you had beer in the shish kebab at Jordan Block, six blocks walked back and forth. About half my guys had gotten and wanted beer. They had to walk the six blocks back and forth, and about half of those, about eight guys also got shish kebab. So they had to go walk all the way down to the Jordan Block, then come back. They pretty much stayed down there, so my group was cut in half. I guess my question was, is, I, I understand that you wanted to, that whoever did this, was it the people who ran it or the city? I don't know whose decision that was. That's not really my point. My, my point is, I don't understand why that was divided up and, um, you know, why, it didn't make any sense to me. The, the Washington Park area was nice, uh, and the other, they're just, that's just the tip of the iceberg. That's the main things. You know, they charge you five bucks to get in, well, there was no, you could, anybody could walk in and out, so the five bucks was out the window, that. And the portions were little, like half condom cups for $2.76, I figured that out. It was a sip, like a half a sip. That's no big deal, but a lot smaller portions than past. My, my whole point being, I bring these people in every year, they love the wine, the old wine fest, they hated this year. They, it was, they'll buy them all back. This year, and sorry, I'll say it publicly, it was a joke. This year was a joke.
Well, I'll just make a comment, um, we wanted, the city wanted to get out of the event business, and we did. And last year, COVID happened.
I understand COVID was a big part of it.
Which was a problem. So this year, we had a, uh, the wine group that worked with the city in the past had a contract to put the wine fest on at the Jordan Block. That's where it was supposed to go.
Okay.
They put in a request after that to move to Washington Park. We requested that they split it up and have half the wineries at each side.
No, all the wineries were Washington Square.
I was down there. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I was disappointed myself. But we turned it over to an independent vendor.
Okay.
They made the call. We had a wrap-up meeting with our staff and a couple of the local vendors afterwards, and, um, we're definitely going to do something different in the future.
Good.
Now, the one thing I will say is when we had Kris Kringle Market, we had lots of positive comments about people that were walking back and forth, but you could get stuff at either end.
Right.
This one, it didn't make sense that, you know...
It didn't make sense at all.
Half the wine should have been at, at each end.
My, my people couldn't understand. Why do I have to walk three, six blocks round trip, go get my beer and my, and my shish kebab? The, the shish kebab bothered me more than anything, because that was not advertised that I ever saw that it was going to be in the Jordan Block until maybe the day before. And I'm sitting there, oh my gosh, these guys all were shish kebab, now they got to walk, and there's supposed to be a shuttle? I never saw a shuttle, but, and...
Well, I think the shuttle was supposed to take people from the courthouse to the hotels. But I, you know, I apologize the way it unfolded. The city wasn't responsible for...
I, I'm not blaming the city.
Well, no, but it is.
I'm here to tell you, my main reason for standing right here right now is, I have people coming from out of town, from out of state, a lot of them won't be back because of...
Well, and we don't, we don't want to hear that kind of, we want people to have a good time.
Well, it's the truth.
Well, I understand that.
And it's unfortunate, really. I mean, the, what, I understand COVID made everything change, but the way it was in the Jordan Block pre-COVID was fabulous. And I'm not criticizing Washington Park, because I think the venue was great. It was the fact that he had stuff all over the place, and that was not advertised that way.
Well, we'll do a better job next year.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? Bill Tracoli, retired, used to be with the City of Ottawa Water Department, uh, citizen now. Wasn't there, getting back to this canal thing, wasn't there a plan a few years back when they were first bringing it up about there was going to be like a separate well?
Yes.
Remember? And it was going to be something coming in from, I don't know if it was going to come from the wa, the raw water line from well eight, or if it was going to be regular freshwater distribution water used for...
The original plan was to drill a well, and it would pump 200 gallons a minute. And the concern we had is, across the country, there's a lot of places that are rationing water, we thought it was wasteful to be, to be using fresh, clean water. And, um, most of the other locations, you know, La Salle and Utica, they use river water for the canal. So we submitted a plan to DNR, and they approved it, and we ended up doing a pump station down by the Aqueduct. So now we're pumping two and a half times what the original...
It's coming from the Fox River.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the discharge is close to where it's pulling out, so...
Yeah, down at the same end, or, or it's, okay. So the water, is it recirculating? Is it a slow recirculation sort?
Well, it's supposed to. It's supposed to be coming in and then draining back to the east at that weir at Guyan Street. And the problem that I think we've got is, there was so much water leaking underneath the bridge.
Yeah.
The sump pumps were, we actually burned out two sump pumps. But it was pumping the water into a storm sewer that was heading south. So now we're, we're going to pump it back into the canal, hoping that we get enough volume, that it'll start the flow going back to the east.
I know, like you just said, you didn't want to use a well because it would be considered, what? Would you say wasteful or...
Yeah, there's...
It would seem that if it was fresh water, though, it'd be better water in the canal, you know?
Well, it'd be fresh water for the first day.
Well, if you had it recirculating through, through its own system where it's being, you know, stick, getting cleaned and getting chemicals in it, you know?
Well...
Almost like a swimming pool kind of a thing. You know, chlorine and, uh, you know, and keep, you know, keeping it also...
Well, I've got a pool, and it costs a little bit of money to...
I know.
Put the chemicals in.
Yes.
We're talking five and a half million gallons of water in the canal. That's a, that's a lot of treatment.
Okay. It was just something I figured maybe, you know, I knew, I had heard about it, so that's why I just, I didn't know it was scrapped. Because I remember last year, driving by where the hydrant is at the dead end on the, at the bridge by Columbus on the west side of the street, they had a hose, hydrant hose hooked up, and it was filling through the barrel, and it was, and I think it was running down and filling the canal once that way. That was last summer.
Well, there are a lot of things going on, but...
That was...
When, when we were under construction and they put down some type of a liner, it wasn't a, like a fabric liner, it was some type of liner, and one of the requirements is that it couldn't dry out. It had to have water on it.
Oh.
So we pumped water from the hydrants.
I thought that was being used even to fill it, because that's what I kept hearing, they were going to start filling it like that, you know? But, okay. All right.
Okay. Now, we're going to enter into a public hearing. We got Kevin Lindeman from NCICG. It's a public hearing for CDBG Public Infrastructure and Housing Rehabilitation Grant. Kevin, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, from our offices, Elizabeth Benham and Connie Buchanan and Jose Alvarez from Renwick and Associates. So we're here tonight for a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program from the state of Illinois for public infrastructure and housing rehabilitation projects that the city's applying for. Both, um, projects will be discussed at this night's, at this night's meeting. We'll be talking about the public infrastructure project first, just to kind of keep them clear and separated. The city of Ottawa plans to submit a grant application to the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Public Infrastructure Program. City intends to submit a grant for $536,333 to DCO. The application will be for funds to separate storm sewer flows from sanitary combined sewer system along West Prospect Avenue from west of Hawthorne Lane to Christie Street, and we've got a map over here if people want to look at it. East Van Buren Street from Illinois State Route 23 to Catherine Street. West Van Buren Street between Cornell Street and Guthrie Street. Cornell Street from mid-block to West Van Buren Street. Houston Street between Guthrie Street and Chambers Street. Cornell Street from mid-block to Houston Street. Chambers Street from mid-block to Houston Street. And Chambers Street from between West Campbell and West Center Street. So there's kinds of, several different sections, I think it's five different sections, so definitely if you want to look at the map, please come do that. So this will separate the, um, storm sewer flows out of the sanitary sewer. I have, uh, the, the grant funds that are requested are being for, only for construction costs and for grant administration. Jose's going to talk a little bit more about the details and what's going into the project.
Uh, the city of Ottawa has developed a long-term control plan to reduce combined sewer overflows, CSOs, to improve the water quality of the Illinois and the Fox Rivers, and to meet regulatory requirements. Ottawa's National Polluting Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permit, requires that the city's 14 permit CSOs comply with all applicable standards, including water quality standards. This report, this project focuses on the combined service area number two. Even though sewage flow from the combined and separate sewer systems is now treated at the wastewater treatment plant during periods of dry weather, CSOs still occur during wet weather events because the sea, the capacity is exceeded due to the storm water entering the sewer system. When the capacity is exceeded, water flows over diversion weirs and out to either the Fox River or Illinois River. CSO discharges to the Fox River and Illinois River can pose risk to human health, threaten aquatic life, and impair the use of enjoyment of the waterway. CSOs contain untreated human waste as well as storm water. Because they are untreated, they contain bacteria, fecal matter, viruses, and other germs that may cause disease. So reducing the number of overflow events is important for the public's health as well as overall health of the waterways. The combined sewers in CSSA 2, Drain to CSO 2, located on the north bank of the Illinois River in Allen Park, that's between the wastewater treatment plant and the Route 23 Bridge. So during wet weather events, this system can surcharge and overflow at CSO 2. So that allows sanitary flow mixed with storm water runoff to be discharged in the Illinois River. Allen Park is a public park with playgrounds, equipment, and public restrooms. It's especially popular with recreational waterway users because of its two boat launches with ample trailer parking, and because its north bank is well-maintained for the purpose of river access fishing. To date, the city has made significant progress toward closing CSO 2. The city enforces policies preventing downspouts, footing tiles, sump drains, and private yard drains from connecting to the sanitary sewer. The combined and sanitary sewers within CSA 2, CSSA 2, have been cleaned and televised. Based on the information provided in the televising, various sewer segments have already been or will be rehabilitated using cure-and-place pipelining. Also, under the ongoing manhole rehabilitation, manholes in CSSA 2 have been evaluated, and leaking covers, frames, and structures have been replaced or scheduled to be replaced. The five locations that Kevin mentioned, uh, this storm sewer project, in all the locations, the new storm sewer will discharge to an existing storm sewer. And some of the project benefits, because of previous improvements undertaken by the city within CSSA 2, this sewer separation project is the final step to take to close CSO 2. So once CSO 2 is closed, all sanitary flows from this area will be routed to the wastewater treatment plant for treatment, and this sewer service area will no longer discharge sanitary flows to public waterways. Construction of this new storm sewer also creates a place for residents within CSSA 2 to discharge downspouts and sump drains, which will alleviate nuisance ponding and issues related to standing water. Upon successful completion of this project, the city will continue to work toward full compliance with the remaining mandates in the city's NPDES permit and the recommendations of the city's long-term control plan. That's basically some of them.
Thanks for that. So they anticipated that this project would be ready to be bid next summer sometime. Uh, grant announcement, once the grant's submitted in August, we'll probably hear sometime this summer, there's paperwork, grant agreements, environmental reviews, they have to be done. Um, so anticipating next summer, construction. And the city of Ottawa does not need a permit from IEPA for this project. The total project cost for construction and grant administration for the CDBG, CDBG project is estimated at $595,925. The grant fund request is for $536,333. The remaining $59,592 will come from the city's general fund. In addition to the construction and grant administration, construction engineering services will cost $56,592.50, and the city is responsible for this funding of engineering fees for this project, because grant funds don't pay for that. No city residents will be displaced as a result of this project. The city does have on file an anti-displacement and relocation plan, assistance plan. At this time, if anybody has any questions about the project that you want to ask anybody? At this time, if anybody has any questions about the project that you wanna ask anybody? Moving on to the total, the public infrastructure program details for the public, for CDBG. There's a total of $18 million available for this year's distribution in the 2021 round. The maximum amount is $550,000. Grant funds can be used for construction activities and grant administration. As I said before, construction engineering services are not available for grant funds. Funds for the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program are granted to the state from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity then distributes the funds throughout Illinois, except for those entitlement counties and communities. Funds dispersed by the state must meet national goal of benefiting 51% older moderate income individuals. The HUD LMI income data was analyzed earlier this year, '21, to determine if the project area would meet the standard according to the census block. The HUD mapping results indicated that the project area exceeds the older moderate income goal, showing a older moderate income benefit of 58.95%, which means of the $536,333 of the grant funds, $316,168.30 will directly benefit older moderate income individuals. We're gonna now move on to talking, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the housing rehabilitation program, project. Connie?
The city of Ottawa intends to submit a $550,000 CDBG grant application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, otherwise known as DCEO. The application will be for funds to rehabilitate an estimated 10 owner-occupied, single-family homes in the project target area. It's bordered by Columbus Street North between West Madison and East Marquette. East Marquette up to and running east along the railroad tracks to the Fox River, back to the West Madison Street. There is a map over here. The grant funds requested are only for construction, administration, and construction supervision costs associated with the project. The city of Ottawa, Illinois is applying for state grant aid assistance to help local and elected-appointed public officials and key civic leaders work with local homeowners in physically declining neighborhoods of the community to decisively address the need for structural rehabilitation of their homes. The local allocation of state grant assistance is limited exclusively to qualifying owner-occupied households which lack the financial resources to address the structural problems that render the single-family residential structures as substandard by comparison with the city's minimal housing codes. This year's proposed state funding will be complemented by an estimated $20,000 from the city of Ottawa to be added to the direct rehabilitation work for income-eligible homeowners residing within the project area that have been selected by the city for rehabilitation. Specifically, the city of Ottawa, working in collaboration with the Ottawa's Housing Rehabilitation Advisory Committee membership, Barnett Construction, and North Central Illinois Council of Governments, proposes to utilize the state's CDBG grant resources to stabilize and revitalize the multi-block declining residential neighborhood, otherwise known as the project area. Housing rehabilitation and neighborhood revitalization efforts will be supervised by the Ottawa Housing Rehabilitation Advisory Committee for the city of Ottawa and must be completed within a 24-month period or less as required by the grant. As outlined in the city of Ottawa's proposed fiscal year 2021, competitive housing rehabilitation grant application, $550,000 in CDBG grant funds from DCEO will be used to provide direct financial assistance for essential, essential home rehabilitation activities to an estimated 10 previously identified low and moderate income households residing within the aforementioned multi-block target area. This will bring the substandard, single-family residential structures into compliance with the city's minimal housing codes. This may be accomplished through the extension of what is known as a five-year forgivable loan to the income-eligible homeowners to correct local housing code violations. This will include deficiencies which pose an immediate and serious threat to the health and safety of the structures economically disadvantageous occupants. Further, these grant funds would be complemented with the local commitment of $20,000. No city residents will be displaced as a result of this project. The city has on file an anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Yes?
So, you, you mentioned there was 10 pre-disclosed or whatever, three people already picked, right?
No. When, what will happen is we, we accept the surveys. The surveys are actually helping the city to qualify. We submit those surveys with the grant application. Once the grant is funded, then we would solicit actual applications from the homeowners within that project area. The, the, myself and the project manager would come out and inspect the home and write up a work order for a bid of how much it would cost. We anticipate that there would be approximately 10. We would have so many minor renovations, moderate and major renovations, which would help the funding go further. Each home would be able to receive up to $50,000 in renovations that they do not have to pay back. The five-year forgivable loan is basically that DCEO asks that the residents agree to stay in the home for the next five years, which prevents fraud. It prevents people from flipping the newly renovated project for profit. So, so, once we go out and accept those applications and inspect the homes, we would bring them back to the housing committee with the spreadsheet of how much the repairs would cost. And we would try to do as many homes as possible. So, we're, we're basically saying that once the grant is funded, that we would have those homes selected per the applications and the housing committee's approval. Are there other questions?
So, Connie, just to clarify.
Yes.
We could do more than 10 homes.
Correct.
So, if we had enough money and the costs weren't as much, we could do a lot more?
Right. And per the surveys that the homeowners received, it shows the income guidelines, which are the county, LaSalle County income guidelines. There's a 30%, 50%, and 80% median. And basically, as long as you live in your home and you own your home, it doesn't have to be that you own your home outright. You can obviously have a mortgage. But if you live in your home, it's a single-family home, not an apartment or rental, then you would qualify as long as you're less than that 80 percentile. The reason that there's a 30 and 50% is that we also partner with Tri-County Opportunities. And they have a different income guideline. They go by the federal poverty level. So, if you're in the 30 and 50%, then it's quite, quite probable that you would also qualify for Tri-County's assistance, which will help the grant funds go further. So, we could put in potentially $50,000 into a home. Tri-County could come in and help with weatherization. They have many safety mechanisms in place. And they also can help with HVAC as far as heating, ventilation, air conditioning. They install CO2 detectors. They do blow tests. They can even do some appliances if they aren't energy efficient. So, they could put in an additional $12,000, $16,000 from their grant funding. So, then our money would go further and we can do more homes. Yes?
When you come up with any inspections, when you said that you were gonna come up with a dollar amount, what, what are you basing that off of an estimated amount or you're gonna do a bid on everything?
It would be, the project manager would come out, who is, owns his own company. He's a construction, he's a contractor here in Ottawa. He would come out and he would, we, we, we anticipate that we concentrate on areas that involve health and safety as having the top priority. Per HUD regulations with this grant, senior citizens, people with disabilities, and people with very low income have a highest priority. With that being said, also the health and safety also has high priority. So, the, the project manager would come out and he would check the plumbing, the electrical, the roof, the windows, the siding, the doors, the floors. We're doing much with handicap accessibility so that people can continue to age in place. Many of the homes are, are older. They don't have the proper doorways, you know, that would accommodate a wheelchair or a wheelchair ramp. So, we're doing much of that. So, he draws up a bid and then we open that up to contractors in the area for the actual bidding. And whoever has the lowest bid is awarded that bid and then we enter into a contract with the homeowner and the contractor. Are there, yes?
You said you had to have 10 families. Did you get 10?
Yes, they're here.
And for the, for the application, we really wanna have 30 families. We've gotten, we're getting more surveys in to show there's a need here for the number of homes. And it might be we get done with this project, it would be reapply whether it's in this area or in another area or combined kind of area to, to continue to do this project.
Right. Many of our areas, we just finished in the city of Marcell's. They're applying again for another part of their town. We are also applying again in the city of Spring Valley and the village of Coal City. Then there's three new areas, Ottawa, Streeter, and Bureau Junction that are applying this year. And when he talked about the 30, if we anticipate that we're doing 10 homes, then we ask for 30 surveys from people within that project area that qualify because that's a three-to-one ratio. Then we get the most points on the application, which is why we wanted 10 homeowners represented here tonight. It's all about points. This is a very competitive grant. There's $7 million available for the state of Illinois. And we're writing six grants for our area and we wanna get all six of those grants. So, we, we strive to get the highest point accumulation for every application process so that they will fund our project.
What's the timeline on that?
We're applying for this the end of July. It has to be submitted by August 3rd. So, we plan on having it submitted by July 30th. We're still getting a few surveys trickling in. But if you, if you talk to your neighbors and they say, "Oh yeah, I got that. I threw it away," call me. I'll give you another one. We want 30-plus, you know, to kinda pad that 30 because we send this sign-in sheet that we all signed tonight. We send all those surveys to DCEO and along with a very healthy tree of, of other information. So, you know, they, they look through everything and we want to make sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed. So, if you talk to your neighbors and they didn't fill out that survey, encourage them to do so because they're helping you to qualify. They're helping the city to qualify. So, those surveys right now, even though you submitted those, it's, it's helping the city right now to qualify. And then, once we get that grant money, then we'll start soliciting those actual applications and coming into your home. So, we do anticipate that we'll hear back from DCEO if we were awarded by winter. So, we would probably be looking at late summer, early fall to actually start the construction. But we'll be having meetings prior to that that will be advertised as far as, you know, "Come here about the application." You know, "I'll help you with the application." And then, "I'm with you every step of the way." Yes?
Can you talk a little bit more about the forgivable loan extension of that and how that affects the grant and if that extends even more? The money can afford it or is it the 500?
Yes, yes. Basically, it's just that the DCEO offers this grant, which for the city of Ottawa would be $550,000. And that would rehabilitate those homes. Not every single home is going to require $50,000. Some might require 20, some might require 30. And in partnering with Tri-County, then they might be able to pick up some of the things that we would be fixing so that then now we have another 20 to go to another house. So, the forgivable loan is basically just a term that, that DCEO asks the residents to agree to stay in their home barring any major complications because obviously, a lot of our residents are seniors or disabled. So, the, there is a potential that they could move in with a family member. They could go to a long-term care facility. It does not go against their estate. It's not a lien. It's basically that you're, we're asking, DCEO is asking people in order to prevent fraud from people just saying, "Hey, I own a house. I can get $50,000 put into it and I can turn around and flip it and get that profit in my pocket." So, that's why they ask people to agree to stay in their homes.
So, everybody who receives the money has to be a part of that?
Correct, correct. Mm-hmm. Is there any other questions? The Department of Commerce may allocate $7 million to this program component and will establish a grant ceiling of $550,000 for the project for the city of Ottawa. Grant funds can only be used for rehabilitation on single-unit residential activity delivery and rehab administrative activities. The city of Ottawa, North Central Illinois Council of Governments, and Barnett Construction, Inc. are completing the application requirements for the August 3rd deadline. Funds for the Illinois Community Development Block Grant are granted to the state from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic then distributes the funds through the Illinois, except for those communities and counties that get direct entitlement from HUD. The funds dispersed by the state to be used for housing must meet the national goal of benefiting 100% low to moderate income individuals. Of the 550,000 of CDBG funds, 550,000 will directly benefit low to moderate home income individuals. Are there any other questions?
One last question.
Yes?
The area that you're talking about, is some of the area that was affected by landers, the ratio slash tornado, can that be put into a complete force your grant compensation or not?
We definitely will add that into our, our summary when, when we apply, we, we have a, what's my word? A project narrative that we, we tell DCEO, we paint a picture. We tell a story of why we picked this area and how this would benefit the area. And I know the village of Coal City had two F3 tornadoes and we put that in the narrative as well. Many of those homes over there, they looked halfway decent on the outside because they had insurance money that fixed them, but it didn't address anything internally. So, that was a, that's why we were able to address those things. Anything else? I'll turn it back over to Kevin.
Thank you, Connie. Now, I'll talk about our, the Ottawa's community development housing needs that we need to discuss for the applications for both public infrastructure, housing rehab. The city had, maintains a list of prioritized projects from year to year. And I'll read through this list and we'll talk about if there's any other projects you wanna add, if there's any ideas from the city. The first project is erosion control, seawall on Allen Park for 1.5 million. Residential blight acquire and demo is 500,000. Elevate Green Street above flood, flood zone is 4.8 million. Supply fill for US EPA radium cleanup, 4 million. Composite compost facility, city trees and lawns, 1.2 million. Downtown waterfront development, 8 million. Stevenson Road drainage and widening, 2.2 million. Peltier Glas Environmental Cleanup, 800,000. East Wastewater Treatment Plant Industrial Park and Route 71 Corridor, 18 million. East Water Treatment Plant Industrial Park and Route 71 Corridor, 10 million. Route 23 Illinois Railway Viaduct and Rail Yard relocation is 15 million. Combined sewer overflow separation improvements is 20 million. Those projects all total up to 86 million. I know the city has a lot more projects and a lot more need. And that's really what these projects are showing is that the city has an abundant need to spend their funds elsewhere. That's why we're asking for grant funds from the state of Illinois for both housing rehabilitation for the community and for public infrastructure. Is anybody, is any of the other projects that we wanna put on that list? No, no projects. I understand. We, we, we got that list, but we had to cut it down. We'd be here even, you know, longer. No additional ideas? Okay. So, we'll, now we'll close the public hearing. Applications for records are Applications for records, or records for both projects are on file at our office, North Central Illinois Council of Governments, at 613 Western Marquette Street. Office is open Monday through Friday from 8 to 4. Anyone interested in viewing the file or discussing the project further can call NCICG at 815-433-5830, or visit during office hours. We can talk to myself, Connie, or Elizabeth. If not, we'll, was it 7:52? Thank you for signing in. If you didn't get a chance to sign in, please do so. We'll close the public hearing.
All right, thanks.
And we'll stick around for the resolution, so.
There you go.
And thanks for everyone showing up. I mean, it's an important opportunity for us, and Marcellus did it last year. Worked quite well. They're doing it again this year, and it's a good opportunity for some of our neighbors to get a little help. So, with that, we will move on to Commissioner Eichelkraut's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of June 11th, 2021, in the amount of $461,514.47 be approved and warrants issued.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the monthly expense report of June 15th, 2021, showing expenses in the amount of $700,063.01 be approved and warrants issued.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the monthly financial report of City Clerk Shelley L. Monks for the month of May 2021 be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution appointing, approving, and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement for a city official in William Hall as full-time NCAP bus driver, which has been on file for public inspections since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of a voluntary disclosure agreement between the City of Ottawa and Illinois State Treasurer regarding unclaimed property, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, Wayne, you want to explain this a little?
Shall I explain it?
Basically, we can turn any unclaimed property, any balances that are left on our books for past due water bills over to the state, and then the state will find the people that they go to. So, it's just a program that the state offers.
All right, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution appointing, approving, and authorizing the execution of four employment agreements for city officials in Barry Baikowski, Mark Leidel, Michael McKenna, and Kimberly Tate as part-time NCAP bus drivers all be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, any discussion?
We just need more drivers.
Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner Eichelkraut?
At the present time, sir.
All right, we'll move to Commissioner Gainier's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Gainier that a resolution authorizing the execution of a management and supervision agreement and wastewater operator contract between the City of Ottawa and Total Environmental Service Technologies Incorporated, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Gainier that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between the City of Ottawa and Fair Graham for a permit application and an engineering report for proposed new wastewater treatment plant, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Gainier that a resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of an engineering, construction, and services proposal between the City of Ottawa and Ashi Dutlinger and Associates Incorporated for the River Crossing Lift Station, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Gainier that the quote received from Gasford and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $28,723.93 for two replacement pumps flowed in a transducer be approved and paid for from the wastewater fund.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner Gainier?
I do not.
We will move to Commissioner Les's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Les that the two quotes received from Stryker in the total amount of $62,125.4 cents to purchase two defibrillators and a Lucas device be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Do you have any details, Commissioner Les?
Sure, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the mayor's agenda.
Move by Mayor Awesome that an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Ottawa, the Lone Buffalo LLC, and Tangle Roots Beverage Company LLC, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be passed and approved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainier, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome that a resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement between the City of Ottawa and the First National Bank of Ottawa regarding parking spaces during business hours in exchange for the dedication of certain land to the city, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, this was a deal where First National Bank had some property in the middle of one of our parking lots, and they're giving us that 10 or 11 spaces, and then we're going to give five spots to them just during the business hours used for their customers. And then we're going to repave the parking lot. Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome that a resolution accepting a grant and dedication of right-of-way from the First National Bank of Ottawa be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainier, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for application services with NCICG for a community development block rehabilitation grant, which has been on file for public inspection since June 1, 2021, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, that's for the public hearing we just had about the housing rehabilitation. Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome that a resolution of support and commitment of funds in the amount of $20,000 for the Community Development Block Rehabilitation Grant be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainier, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut?
Aye.
Gainier?
Aye.
Les?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Move by Mayor Awesome that a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement between the City of Ottawa and Buxton Company for marketing strategies be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Sir, a second.
Second.